Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative of the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, the committee will hear Bill Number 21-0113. And in attendance today, we do have members of the committee. Mark Conway of the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ryan Dorsey of the Third District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just got a message, Councilwoman Odette Ramos is presently, a BMZA meeting is being heard right now, and I guess they've kind of gone over, but she will join us. And Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District is in a CHAPS meeting right now. He's Representative for the Council on CHAPS, and he will be joining us as soon as that meeting is over. And moving on, no other council members. Representatives from the Council President's Office, we have Lisa Font that is with us today. And also, we have, I see Erin DeGraffan-Reed is also from the Council President's Office. Lucy is tuning in. She's not here presently, but she is here tuning in and listening. Bill Number 21-0113, Zoning Code Modifications. The purpose of making needed changes to certain provisions that during the course of actively operating under the new zoning code, we discovered to be functionally impractical and otherwise in need of modification to obey previously unanticipated consequences and generally relating to the zoning and land use laws of the city of Baltimore. This bill was sponsored by Council President for the administration, more particularly the Department of Planning. This bill was introduced on August 16, 2021. A public hearing was held on March 1, 2021, and that hearing was recessed. As a reminder, public testimony was taken at the last hearing. The committee will not be taking public testimony for today's work session. As stated in the public hearing, we all know that the process for making modifications to the city's zoning code can be a monumental task. Prior to Transform Baltimore, which began in 2012, the zoning code had not been modified since 1971. It took five years to complete the comprehensive rezoning process. Moving forward, it is my hope that future modifications and reviews of the city zoning code be performed annually in order to stay abreast of current zoning trends as well as other related land use and zoning activities. The committee will now resume discussion. At the public hearing, the committee heard from agency representatives. I understand that the zoning administrator, Jeffrey Veal, is unable to attend today's hearing and will be represented by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And at the public hearing, the committee also reviewed proposed changes to Article 32, Title I, outlined in the bill, as well as touched upon proposed amendments, which we will discuss at the appropriate time. Today, we will begin discussions of Title II and additional titles. Tamara Woods, would you like to go ahead and begin? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and committee members. Is this on? Yeah, I think you can hear. Okay.
You gotta put your mic up closer.
Okay. Is that better?
If you want to take your mask off while you're speaking, you can.
Okay. That might be better for you guys. Okay, is that better? Okay. So again, we're gonna start with Title II. You want to just jump right on in? Okay. So we're on page seven of the bill, for those that are following along in the bill. And we'll move pretty quickly, I think, and then just pause if there are any questions of me. So we're starting with 2202, which is the First Amendment that we have in line 25, well, line 26. And it's for any installation, structure, equipment, or accessory that is owned by a government entity and located in a public right-of-way or on public property is what we're seeking to add. So it's just clarifying that the government-owned extends into our public property as well. So that's the only change that we have to 2203. And so we're flipping to page eight, 2203 Transition Rules. And C, D, and J pretty much have the same amendment. And so I'll start with 2203, C2. So I'll just read it. Any subsequent change to that use, and we're seeking to delete, including any addition, expansion, relocation, or structural alteration, and instead of that language, we would add, must be approved by BMZA and then the rest of the language, as it is in the code, is subject to the procedural and substantive requirements imposed by this code on the conditions. And so what we're doing is clarifying that BMZA would be able to make any changes unless they're otherwise noted specifically in a piece of conditional use legislation. So currently, every kind of change would have to go back to the council, but some changes, we don't really see as that, you know, necessary to go back to the councils, you know, maybe for a small five-foot change or something like that. But if for some reason, you know, say there was language about a specific height or a specific something that was detailed in that particular bill and needed to be changed, it would have to go back to City Council. So that's really the extent of what we're looking at in 2203. The same thing, we're mirroring that same language in D2. And again, for J, when we come down to J3, which talks about previously granted variances and conditional uses. So any questions?
Any questions from the committee at this point?
Nope.
Hearing done. Move on.
Okay, so we're moving on to Title III. So Title III deals with BMZA. And what we're looking at is in B, which is powers and duties. So we're going down to six and seven to authorize accessory uses as long as they meet the standards for accessory use as defined in 1302 and to authorize uses not listed in this code, subject to 1217. So this is really giving BMZA, you know, the authority and flexibility that they really need to have to deal with accessory uses that come. Part of the reason for this is exactly, Madam Chair, what you stated in the very beginning, is before Transform, we hadn't changed the zoning code since 1971. There's a whole life, you know, that we all grew up in of uses that have come to be in the way that we do life and do business. So this particular set of language allows BMZA that authority to make decisions based on the reality of the day, then time, that we're living in as far as accessory uses go. And accessory uses are not the primary use. They are something that is subordinate to the primary use, but they can get that latitude. So that's basically all that we have in Title III.
Do you have an example of an accessory use?
So it's an office, like even a home office is an accessory use. So it's not that you're zoned like a C, you know, a C-zone, but many people, especially during COVID, have, you know, home offices. And so this would allow you to, whatever that may be, to operate and give the BMZA the authority to determine if exactly your brand of home office is actually indeed that. So it really is just giving that latitude. It's not meant to change our zone to a C-zone or anything like that.
Madam Chair.
What about, say, a small housing in the rear of a property?
So this does not touch ADUs.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conway.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go back to 2-203.
Yeah, I wanted to go back to this as well.
Okay.
This goes back to my question before. You said that this would change the code so that in small instances, it wouldn't have to come back to the council, but that in some instances, it would still come back to the council. Can you clarify what the difference is in determining which goes to the council and which still goes?
So...
Or will now go to BMZA?
Sure. And I don't have an example bill in front of me, but usually, you know, if you are doing a conditional use, then, you know, you have the right to impose even like a specific time of day of operation or a specific something and write it into that approval. If it is written into that approval specifically...
Which year?
Okay, sorry. If it is written into that approval specifically, then that has to go back to council. If it is not something that, say, I can only think of like a bulk standard or something like that, that is not really written into there, it's just, you know, you give the use approval and they want to do like, I don't want to say like a third-story addition, but that's what's coming to my head, then that would have to go to BMZA to get, you know, that approval. So it isn't the specific thing, but it is still changing the conditional use.
Can you give me, forgive me for not fully understanding. Still kind of knew some of the stuff. Can you give me an example where that might come into play?
Sure. So I know the one that you might be thinking of is probably in North Baltimore is the, and I mean, if that's the one that you really wanted to talk about. I don't know a ton about it. I wasn't involved in it. But I do know that there was, I guess it was like a little 10-foot shed or something that was proposed to be on the back of a wine store. And there was opposition to it. And our position was that it could go to BMZA for this, for what we saw was a minor something. The community felt different and still feels differently that that authority should remain with the council because it is indeed changing the conditional use itself. But our standpoint is that it is not the use itself that is being changed, but also what they were asking was really just a minor something for storage, you know. So it wasn't deemed as anything that was changing kind of the content of the use itself. So for us, this clarification is something that my understanding used to be in the old zoning code. So it's returning it back to what it was, that BMZA can approve what is deemed to be minor. Now, if for some reason, that conditional use, and again, I don't know how that particular one was written, but if for some reason, that law was written to say you could not do an expansion of blah, 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 then it would have returned back to council. But absent that specific language or that specific, you know, condition on the property itself, then it would go to BMZA.
So I think in the example that we're discussing here, I think one of the questions also, because this is a big, big, big topic as I was running for election, so I just want to...
Yeah, get close.
I'm sorry. So as I remember with this issue, it was a really, really big issue as I was running, as I was talking to neighbors. And I think the understanding was that part of the conditional usage would have allowed them to have music and to have bands playing and otherwise. And although the addition is just an addition and wouldn't, if it kept within its initial use of selling goods, selling alcohol and otherwise, not so much a concern. But with potential music and serving diners and otherwise, I think that was part of the concern. So how would that actually fit into this?
So that part, I'm not familiar. Like I was explaining, I'm not familiar with all the merits of that particular case. I only know about the expansion for the shed piece of it. So I don't know or can't speak to the music part of it. So I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Is it okay if we follow up offline? Just I don't want to get into too much of my individual stuff.
Sure.
That would be helpful to understand.
Okay.
What was the zoning code prior to Transform on this particular subject?
So my understanding is that it was this, that you could go back to BMZA and get that change on the conditional use unless it was otherwise a specific condition or criteria placed within the law itself. So this is a return to that. But, you know, I think there has been a lot of discussion. And to your point, I think some comfort for people about making everything go back to being changed via ordinance. But we do believe that there is a distinction on the extent of the change being requested. And if it is not seen as something that is really changing the merits of that conditional use, then it should go to BMZA. But to your point, this is the discussion we'll have to have offline because I'm not familiar with the music portion of it. So if, you know, I think we have to have that discussion.
Sure.
And I guess if you can repeat again. So what are you actually proposing?
So we're actually proposing to just remove the language that says including any addition, expansion, relocation, or structural alteration and replacing it and saying any subsequent change to that use must be approved by the BMZA. So it is, it literally just says it can go to BMZA. And per normal, if a law has to be changed, the specifics of that law, then it has to come back before the council.
So...
So what we're going to do, we're going to put a star or something beside this piece, if that's okay, as we...
Yeah, just...
Go ahead.
I'm hard of hearing, so I want to make sure I didn't miss something. This only, this only applies to conditional uses that are conditional by board now, right? Like if a use is under the, if a use is...
That's not correct.
No.
You want to explain it just...
A use that is a bail bonds shop that is conditional by ordinance can't be altered by going to the BMZA. It still has to come to the council, right? Because right now, it's conditional by ordinance.
What we're saying is that those specific conditions that are in there have to come back to council. But if it's not anything that's changing the nature of what council approved in that condition, then it can go to BMZA. So this, when you talk about like structural alteration, you know, if that isn't what, if the condition approved, say via council, didn't speak to that, then there's no reason that the law needs to change because you're not actually altering what was approved. But I think to the councilman's point over here is that apparently, in this case, and this is where we have to discuss, and see, and I don't know this, is that attached to that, there was a proposal to actually change the use itself. And if that's the case, then, you know, I didn't make the decision, but if that was the case at that time, then maybe questionably that is an expansion of the conditional use itself and probably could have come back. I'm not sure. So we'd have to look and see. But as far as the shed goes, that wasn't anything that we deemed as...
All right. So if I have a 104-bed residential care facility, I'll just say, for example. And I, the conditional use for that specifically said 104 beds, and now I want to make it 130 beds. Because that was written into the conditional ordinance, then I have to come back with an ordinance.
Yes.
But if I have a 104-bed facility that didn't specify that it has 104 beds and it was just a conditional use for the facility, and now I want to increase it to 130 beds, I go to the BMZA instead of the council.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're, I think it would be good to still kind of just highlight this section so the committee can still review.
Yep.
It seems like it's going to be some more discussion.
Yes. And we, I mean, in all fairness, we definitely have some testimony at Planning Commission as well. So I think it's fine to go through it.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah. Just wanted to let you know that I'm looking at my old copy of the December 2015 zoning code, and it did have something similar to what's being requested here today, just to clarify.
Okay. Good information. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey, yes.
Can we backtrack once more? I'd like to go back to 202.
Okay. We, the councilman has a question. We want to backtrack to 202.
Tamara, where are we coming from with this?
So this one, I'm not 100% sure of on public property. I would imagine that it is driven by some specific ask of some sort that I do not know about.
I don't know what that ask is, but I know that we killed one last term that would not have come up as an issue had this not been, the current condition's not been the case. I'd be highly reluctant to allow city agencies to do certain things just because it's on city property and just because they don't have to ask anybody for any sort of approval. I'd be highly, highly reluctant to give that my go-ahead. We had a case here that only because we had to force a city agency to come before the council, only because the law required the city agency to come before the council, were we able to stop something that was, I think, widely understood to be contrary to public interest and was made clear only because we had a hearing here before the council. And this would completely do away with any regulation on anything on city property. I have an amendment, and I'd like the Planning Department to support that amendment if I could. I have an amendment to change that.
I think we would have to look more closely. And I actually want to talk to the Law Department a little bit more to find out what the ramifications are because I do know that certain, you know, contracts that go through for the city, you know, basically will talk to government-owned, whether it's in the right-of-way or on an actual facility. So even, you know, things, and I'll just talk, you know, Hillary, about signage or, you know, all of those things, they're impacted because they go on public property and not necessarily in our streets or roads. So I'd want to get a little bit more clarification on that piece of it before we, you know, wholesally strike it.
Hillary, from the Law Department?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Honestly, I'm looking at this, and I don't know what it's intended to do because it's not necessary. So I'm not exactly sure. I mean, it's saying any installation, structure, equipment, accessory that's owned by a government and located in a public right-of-way or on public property. I guess that's an installation that isn't a sign because for most of what you're referring to, government-owned signs are already exempt in the zoning code. So you're going to have to be talking about some sort of structure or equipment that's owned by the government and not in a public right-of-way. So I'm searching my mind to figure out what that might be, but I'm sure you've got an example.
Any building, anywhere on any city property.
Well, but the installation, structure, equipment, or accessory, the structure's the building. It's already in there. So government-owned buildings, they already aren't. So this is talking about something that isn't an installation. It's not a structure. It's not an equipment. It's not an accessory that's owned by the government. That's already, you're going to have to give me one that is not in public. I guess you're saying a building not in the public right-of-way.
Correct.
Well, it's something on the building. So could it be a telecom something? Could it be...
I don't, I don't know because, you know, this is...
Something like a...
It doesn't, I mean, most of the time, the agreements you're referencing are for signs, and they are already exempt. If we own the sign, we're not subject to the zoning code. So I would have to think of something that would be government-owned and not in the right-of-way.
A parking lot in Druid Park.
That if it were government-owned, yeah. But it would have to, you know, not be in the public right-of-way.
Yeah, it's not in the public right-of-way, in the middle of the park. I mean...
But where, and that's a subsequent amendment where we are specifically going to remove what we're proposing to say that that's still conditional by ordinance. So, you know, I don't think that this language would supersede what we say would be conditional by ordinance for the parking lots in open space. But again, I would look to the Law Department to say, if we left this language in, would it supersede the future amendment that is important for the open space?
I mean, the more specific will always govern, but here, you're, you are exempting all these structures, accessories from the entire zoning code. My understanding is that it might have been attempting to capture telecom structures on top of government buildings because it would be very difficult to just make the property a government-owned and not in the right-of-way. Perhaps there's a more narrow way to read this so it doesn't cover your parking garage and does cover whatever was intended, but I don't, I don't know.
I, now that we're discussing this, I had a conversation with the Mayor's Chief of Staff about this particular provision as soon as this ordinance was introduced. And I appreciate you reminding me that the conversation quickly steered toward telecom communications on government buildings. I think the end of that conversation was the idea that we can probably come up with more narrowly focused language to specifically address that concern if that's what we need to do. I'd be happy, I'd be happy to work to create more narrowly focused language.
Right. And I think, you know, there's...
Because I don't, I don't want to give up the... If I'm hearing Tamara right, the idea is, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where the subtitle is where you're referencing, talking about parking lots in open space. But just for argument's sake, I'd like to retain the requirement that parking lots in open space is conditional by ordinance, and I would not want that to be exempted for the city by this provision, allowing a structure or installation outside, you know, on any government-owned property, on any city-owned property.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's probably a way we could reword it. I mean, and to just small subpoints, many cities don't regulate themselves under their zoning code. They completely exempt themselves and everything they own and do. And I know when this was originally in Transform, that was not the intent. It was to have only certain small things that don't have the zoning hurdle. With respect to telecom, even removing the zoning hurdle for telecom doesn't really get the telecoms a ton because they have so many FCC and other federal and state regulation that a narrow carve-out for them could probably be achieved and still leave intact all the other...
Yeah. So my understanding is that the intent here is pretty narrowly around telecom. I'd like to work on some better language just to address that in lieu of this.
Sure. We can make it specific. And the amendment that you're interested in is further down the line. It's on page 52.
Thank you.
Yes.
So you're good with 202 for now?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to do some work on that telecom, though. Yeah, I'm still, I'm still standing with my amendment, but I think that the point is that there needs to be a counterpart to my amendment that specifically addresses the telecom concern. Thank you.
Gotcha. And before we leave 203, I just, first, I want to make it a matter of record. We did get a written testimony in from the Bologna Giddings community. And you might want to, I guess, answer some of this. They would prefer City Council to retain oversight of changes to liquor stores, a responsibility that would be moved by BMZA if 203 is approved as recommended.
This is exactly the...
So would you...
It's exactly the issue we were just talking about.
Okay.
So that is the issue, and I think we'll have to have more discussion on it because we've stood firm in what we're proposing. But I do think that it's worth discussing if there's broader concern about the use itself and expansion to live entertainment and other concerns. But as far as the shed issue that I'm aware of, we definitely stand firm in what we have.
Okay. I just wanted to make that as a matter of record from this particular community.
Sure. Thank you.
I might also suggest, and I'm not sure, I have to relook at the zoning for...
The mic.
We might also suggest, and I may have to look at the zoning to understand for that particular case what the deal is. But at some point, expansion does have an impact on the surrounding community. And is there an appropriate way to figure out that threshold for which an expansion... And is there an appropriate way to figure out that threshold for which an expansion, although it doesn't change the use, does have a broader impact on the community? So for instance, Councilman Dorsey gave an example of housing, you know, 104 units. If you expanded that to 504 units, that's a pretty, pretty significant thing, although it doesn't actually change necessarily the zoning.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can look at some of that, but one of the things to understand about a conditional use by ordinance is that the council has the ability to be specific in that ordinance. In the example that you gave, you all chose not to be specific by not putting in a unit count. So therefore, you kind of leave yourself open, but I think some of what you're getting at is if it is not, you know, impactful, if I just need the extra 10 feet to store dry goods.
Don't care.
Then okay.
Save the time of the council.
Right, you know, why, so when we talk about equity issues and we talk about all of these different things, why should the cost of a bill to get storage for, you know, crates? You know, does that really weigh out? But to your point, if the expansion is to do a live band, then okay, let's talk about it. So I think we, we can, you know, kind of figure out what that line and threshold is.
And we do have Jason Hassler with Code Enforcement that would like to add to this conversation.
Jason Hassler, Department of Housing and Community Development. Just a point of clarification, in that example of 104 units changing to even 105 units, that would be a change of use. So it would require a new use permit, which would trigger all kinds of different reviews and everything else. So it might not, might not be the best example for that particular circumstance.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're finished, committee, on Title 2, 203. And I do want to recognize Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District, member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tamara, you can go ahead.
Okay, so I think we went through three, 202, so we're now at Title 4. So Title 4, we're on page 10 of the bill, and there are a couple of changes to, this is our design review authority section. So we're adding on page 10, a new 10 and a new 11. So the 10 is any sign that is conditional on BMZA appeal approval, but without regard to its copy and message. This is because we're actually adding in the ability to do signs that are conditional to the board. So with that extra level of scrutiny, we felt that there should be some design review. And the, the signs that are coming, at least the top of my head, are the small digital signs to residential areas. So we've gotten a lot of requests for those, so we decided to add in conditional to the board for signage. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the new 11, which is any painted mural sign, but without regard to its copy or message. This is a new sign type that we're adding into the code altogether. Right now, painted and mural signs fall under wall signs, but as we've seen in the past, you know, two or three years, the, the desire for a painted sign is just like skyrocketed. So we do feel that it deserves its own, to be its own sign type. But with that comes a little extra design review, because with painted signs, one, they're usually, they can be the size of an entire elevation, but they also, unlike other signs, can cover architectural features such as windows or different things like that, depending on the specific design. So again, this is the extra level of scrutiny that comes with design review for those particular signs. And all of the other changes that you see are just kind of the renumbering for what exists. And that is Title 4, any questions?
Questions on Title 4?
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
This means, are we drawing a distinction between a sign and a mural that is not a sign?
No, we're not, so if that's just
If I want to paint the side of my house yellow, I don't have to come to site plan review. But if I want to paint the side of my house yellow with decorative stuff and art, flowers, I don't have to come, I still don't have to come to
No, these, these are for signs, so anything that falls under the definition of a sign is not artwork. So if you, you know
What if it artistically paints the word "Ryan was here"?
If that is legally your logo and your slogan, then that falls under the definition of signage. So that's where, with signage, you have to be really clear about what falls under the definition of a sign. So in, in, in the city, what we have now is someone might do a really beautiful mural, all artwork, and then they slip in a company logo. Well, if you were doing a company logo on a wall sign or a projecting sign, that's signage, so it's regulated. Same thing for a painted sign. Right now, the only difference is, you know, kind of the way by which you get it. So a wall sign could be, you know, I put this on the side versus I actually just paint it. Painted sign falls under wall sign now. We're pulling it out. We're pulling it out so that what happens is you get your own quantity, you get your own measurement methodology, because how you measure a mural is very different than how you might do, you know, I ordered from Signs R Us, a square box. So by virtue of making it its own sign type, you actually can make the regulation what you need it to be in order to, to do the kinds of regulations that you need to be. A lot of times, you know, people do have that artistic expression, and we're not trying to regulate that by any stretch. And I think to your point, what people might not know is for many, many years, the zoning administrator, the way he measures painted signs is actually different than the way he does wall signs. So if you have, say, this entire wall is painted, he doesn't measure this entire wall. He basically takes this piece and this piece and cumulatively, if the message is only in these two areas, that together is what is added to become your area of signage. So he has had his
Only the portion of the total mural that is considered
He doesn't measure what's considered art. Right, and he's been doing that for years.
So listening to this discussion, page 10, number 11, should there be more language to help to make it clear of the usage?
So all of that is in Title 17.
17.
So this is only giving us the design review authority. Title 4 just tells us what triggers we have for that authority. And then we could have a companion section in our design manual to speak to it. But the actual, you know, sign criteria of a painted mural sign is actually in Title 17.
So for clarity of this number 11, go to 17.
Yes.
Okay, any more questions?
I feel like I'm not quite settled on this one.
Okay, you go right ahead.
The design review authority, I mean, it's paint. So what is it that we're reviewing for design?
So right now, Title 17 says, and this is just an example, that no sign may cover architectural features. But we are actually, if you go to Title 17, we're actually, I'll say waiving that for painted signs, because we know that the nature of artistic expression or continuity of design might actually mean that you're going to paint over a window, paint over a cornice, paint over, you know, something like that. So the design review authority allows us to actually look at your proposed design and say, you know, question, why are you making this move, or could you do it differently? It's no different than the way that we do any kind of design review right now. But what is important for us to be able to do that is that we have the authority to do it. And right now, we don't, we won't have the legal authority to do that with, even though painted, and, and this is, I think, really important to understand to your, your previous point. Regardless of if it's art or signage, people in communities take their mural seriously. And we get, and I saw your, your head is shaking, we get lots of calls and lots of conversations about, is this legal? Can they do this? Can this come down? Should we, you know, all of these different things? So, you know, it's really one important to distinguish what is a painted sign. But secondly, that second level of eye on the signage portion of it. I don't care if the non-signage portion has a swirl somewhere, but I do care if it's a swirl over a window. You know, so it, it just is, it's regular kind of design review.
So I turn to page 48, 17-412. Could you just kind of speak a little bit about that? It's the painted mural signs section that I think you
So
are referring to.
Right, so this is the, of 412, so it's companion. I wish I had like a third hand. So let me hold on.
Take your time. And while you're doing that, I want to recognize Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the 14th District, member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, apologies for being late.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll back up a little bit. So we'll go to page 36. So, yes. Yeah, I'll just kind of walk you through a little bit on Title 17. So the, the first subtitle is 17-1, where you have the definition. So this is kind of the case for all signs. You first define what is the sign itself, and that's what happens in subtitle 1. And what becomes, you know, we kind of carve out the specific inclusions. And then what's really important is the exclusions. So this is what allows us to truly separate it from any other sign type. So no longer, you know, should anyone confuse a painted sign with a wall sign. And so that's where the, the first piece happens. And then if we move to page 40, you know, at the top of page 40 is where we talk about the covering window, door, et cetera prohibited. So that's where we're adding in or proposing to add in language about the painted and mural signs that seeks to cover any window, door, or prominent architectural feature must have design review. So this, where that design review authority happens is in Title 4, which is, so that's the companion amendment to this particular one. So it, it really, it's, it's a series of amendments that is, is really setting up the painted and mural signs.
Okay, thank you. You, Councilman Dorsey, are you okay, or you?
No, I think that that helps give good clarity there. But just as a kind of a final thought on this, the design review, you could, if I, if I had a stroke of my brush going up onto the cornice, and that was essential to my artistic vision, but was not necessarily a part of the signage portion of the overall mural, is this something that design review would concern itself with?
Possibly. So we wouldn't, we couldn't necessarily say, no, this is where the discussion of design review is a discussion, right? If for some reason you submitted a proposal and it was problematic, then we would have a discussion with you about the totality of the proposal and see what pieces you're willing to change or could change. Now, if that isn't your box, you know, of signage, then it could be up to you, you know, whether or not you want to deal with that, because that then falls under murals, which is, are artistic, which we're not governing, the zoning code doesn't touch that. So that's just a different discussion. And I'm not sure, Jason, maybe you know how just murals are permitted differently, but you would submit it as a totality, but we don't count it in that box.
Yeah, I mean, just, my perspective is that it shouldn't even come up in discussion. I mean, in the scenario that I presented, if it has nothing to do with signage, then it should, like, it shouldn't even be allowed to come up in discussion. If it's just artistic and it's not part of the strictly regulated portion, you know, what we're talking about here, the signage portion. I just hate the idea of a committee even feeling like there's any level of entitlement to artistic critique governmentally. It just rubs me the wrong way, like, 100%.
We're, we're honest about it. I mean, we, we get people that, you know, come with all kinds of requests, and sometimes the communities are like, oh gosh, this is a sign. And if it's not a sign, we say, no, it's not a sign. And we don't really deal with it. If, so that, that's kind of the, I'll, I'll put on my, the old hat I used to wear as a community planner. You know, that, that's the art of discussions with communities and the things that you have to talk about sometimes, and, you know, it, nothing is, is black or white, you know, necessarily in this case. But we don't, we're not going to govern, if your swoosh is outside of, you know, your box, we're not going to say, oh, you can't do it. But the, the beauty of kind of looking at the painted mural sign is that we are saying you could have artistic expression. In no other sign type, you know, really, do you see it curve around the side of a wall. The sizes that we are, you know, you would be able to have are different, so we're allowing some latitude. But typically with painted and mural signs, they are part of a cohesive kind of look. So if for some reason we wanted to say, oh, change this piece of it, nine times out of 10, whoever the applicant is, is going to relook at the whole thing anyway. Why? Because it's a cohesive piece of art, you know, in their brain. So we're, we're, it's not like we're putting our thumb down to say any of that.
Hillary, did you want to weigh in? I, I saw you.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, from a First Amendment perspective, the government can't be dealing with your content, whether the content is speech or whether the content is your artistic method. But the, I think it's a little tricky here, because design makes it sound like artistic design. But the design review happening is, think of it more like code enforcement. Did you block a window? Did you, you know, basically make the cornice unsafe and it's going to fall on someone? Then the government's regulating that aspect, and if it ends up changing your artistic overall picture, then yeah, you may be forced to change your art, but not because we didn't like your art. We, we aren't commenting on the art, we're commenting on the safety or whatever the other issue is.
I'm sorry, last thing. Since the chair mentioned page 48, and I just glanced at it, is there a comma missing on line 6? On page 48, is there a comma missing?
17-412.
After the word categories? Painted mural signs are allowed in the R1A through R10 zoning categories, comma, on all uses in the institutional open space? Should there be a comma there? I don't understand this sentence without a comma.
I don't know that there needs to be a comma there, but
I don't, I don't understand what this clause of, would mean without a comma.
Okay, so what this whole section is, and, and I'm going to leave it to legislative reference in their bill drafting to say if we need to have a comma for clarity. But what this particular section does, and this, this appears for all sign types, is it literally is telling you where you can do this sign. So in this particular case, in the R1A through R10 zoning categories, on all uses in the institutional open space and commercial use categories, this refers to our use tables. If you look at our use tables, they actually are broken into categories with these particular headings. So this is just saying that anything under those use headings can do this. What this is really getting at, it's, it's the authority, but what it's saying is you can't paint a sign, a mural sign on the side of your house.
You cannot?
You cannot.
Painted mural signs are allowed in the R1A through R10 zoning categories. My house is in one of those.
On, read the rest of the sentence, on.
On all uses
In the institutional
Institutional open space and commercial use categories, I see. So But not on my house if I'm using it as a house.
So, when you look at the use tables, everything that's deemed residential.
I can paint a mural, but I can't paint a mural sign.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, is the committee ready to start Title Fives? Any more questions? And.
So, no comma necessary is.
Is a comma necessary?
To me, no, but.
No. I understand the sentence. No, thank you.
The answer to that is no. Moving on to Title Five.
Okay. So, we are starting with five two oh one, and I do have, Jason Hessler is here as well.
Thank you for joining us, Jason Hessler.
So, there are a lot of changes that are being proposed under DHCD authority and BMZA and a couple of other areas. So, we're going to slowly walk through this and we can go as far as we can go or, you know, follow your lead in terms of timing. So, the first one, introduction of proposed authorization. An application for conditional use, conditional sign, or appeal from the zoning administrator must be filed with BMZA. All other applications must be filed with the zoning administrator. So, what this is doing is streamlining the process. Right now, what happens, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now what happens is basically you go to the zoning office and you file for a permit that's rejected and then they send you up to BMZA. So, this is proposing to kind of cut out the middleman. Like, if you know you have to go to BMZA and do the application, why not just go straight to BMZA and do the application? So, that is what this particular amendment is proposing. So, then we can jump down to D on traffic mitigation within, refer to DOT. Within fifteen days of receiving a completed application, the zoning administrator or the BMZA, as the case may be, must refer the applicant to all, you know, accompany documents to DOT. So, this again is just clarifying and giving that authority to BMZA. So, it's just adding and moving it from, from just the zoning administrator to BMZA.
So, when it gets to the zoning administrator, does he actually make decisions on anything in that, at that point?
So, it's processing the application. So, the actual decisions.
Certain, he just does a certain thing.
Correct. And there'll be some other proposed changes down the line, but yes.
Okay. Could you give a description of what the zoning administrator does?
Sure, maybe should I?
Just for clarity for the whole committee.
To DHCD.
Because it's several layers. So, what exactly does the, is the responsibility of the zoning administrator himself?
Particular to this situation or just overall?
General, overall. What does the, what's the responsibility of the zoning administrator?
The zoning administrator's office reviews all permits that are filed to make sure that the.
Oh, we can't hear you. Okay.
The zoning administrator's administrator and his office responsibility is to review all the permits that are filed to make sure that it conforms with the zoning code. So, not just the proposed use, but also meet up with setbacks and all other requirements of the zoning code. So, that's their primary purpose, and then they also serve as a reference for individuals that are seeking to purchase properties or change use of a property to make sure that what they're purchasing, they can then use it in the way that they desire. So, those are the two main things that the zoning administrator does. And what this bill, this change in this bill would do is relieve some of the work that comes into the zoning administrator and reduce the delay for items that all the zoning administrator is doing is denying rubber stamping, processing, and then shipping off to the BMZA. So, it's just cutting the zoning administrator out of that step and allowing the person to go directly to the BMZA, which will better serve them and the public because things will move faster.
So, can BMZA perform the functions of the zoning administrator as needed?
I don't know that I understand the question. For, as far as the change goes?
Can that work? Can they do what the zoning administrator does? Can they do any of those responsibilities?
Well, as it gets laid out in the, as the amendment is made, yes, they would be able to review the things that are being referred to them. As far as like completely cutting out the zoning administrator, you're, the BMZA is not set up to handle that kind of volume.
Okay. I see Liam Davis of DOT has.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, my understanding with this provision that's being proposed, it's merely going to give BMZA the authority to refer, you know, developments, additions, et cetera, to DOT to review for traffic mitigation purposes. So, it's really DOT that's going to be doing the reviewing, and it just gives the BMZA the authority, an additional person, the authority to submit to DOT for review. Because right now, my understanding, it's just the zoning administrator. This would also give BMZA the authority to submit projects to DOT for traffic mitigation review purposes.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? Okay.
Okay. So, five two oh two, again, is just adding in the executive director of BMZA, so it's following suit like the previous DOT amendment, just expanding that authority, making sure that it's clear. And if we're switching over to page twelve, subsequent changes. And so, this is about the application. So, after an application is determined to be complete, any change made by the applicant to the application must be submitted to the zoning administrator and BMZA and the zoning, BMZA no later than thirty days before the scheduled hearing to be held. So, it's gone from fifteen to thirty days. So, again, as Jason said, this is really about giving the time that is needed within the agency to do their due diligence in reviewing and applications. So, fifteen days is really pretty quick turnaround. So, this is changing it to thirty. At the board's direction, minor changes to the application may be made to the record at the hearing. So, this is again distinguishing what is major or minor. My understanding, I don't work directly with BMZA, but they do have their consent agenda as well for things that are uncontested. So, this is basically giving that allowance to allow for these minor things to continue.
Okay.
And so, moving on to five three oh three, again, this, this section is related to variances, but it's, it's about kind of, you know, helping with the load that the zoning administrator carries right now. So, what we're seeking to say, the zoning administrator or the administrator's designee must determine, you know, the following, whether the application is for a minor variance or a major variance. So, we haven't changed that particular authority, and that would be up to, I guess, the housing commissioner to determine, or Jason, I'm not really sure who that designee is. So, that's something within DHCD to decide if there is a designee, but the authority still lives with the zoning administrator. So, that is, so again, on notice of findings, again, we're just adding in or designee, or designee. So, that's just giving relief to, I think, an overburdened zoning administrator right now. Let's see. And the same thing on page thirteen of the bill, five three oh four, adding in or the administrator's designee. So, again, it's just giving that latitude for whomever they designate. So, major variances. So, this particular change is about the public hearing required. Let's see. So, except as provided in subsection B, the hearing must be concluded in no more than ninety days from the board's receipt of a completed application. And this really just has to do, I think, with, you know, how many applications actually just come in and their ability to process and keep up with. So, it's giving BMZA the latitude that they need to process the applications. And then the following waiver of time limit, so it follows suit into sixty to ninety days. So, a lot of these are just kind of chain reaction amendments. So, we're moving on to.
I just want to, I guess for the record, make a clarity statement to the committee that the zoning administrator is part of housing and community development, not an employee with the BMZA.
Correct.
Want to make that a matter of record. Okay. Thank you.
So.
So. Question, Councilman Conway.
To that end, as an employee of HCD, would they be looking for different things in this review process that the BMZA would not be thinking about?
No, the review is, I mean, it's, the review is both based on the zoning code. So, when the zoning administrator receives a permit, they're looking at it from the zoning perspective. Then that permit, once approved, moves on to the other divisions within DHCD and other agencies for their relevant reviews based on what the permit request is. So, somebody's opening a restaurant and it's a use request, fire and health and building and whoever else needs to be on there would be on there. Items that are going to the BMZA, they are again looking at the zoning code, but they're looking, they're looking at it because the zoning administrator did not have the authority to grant what was being requested.
So, for example, the code is very clear in the use tables of what is conditional to the board. I mean, it's spelled out. So, in that case, why put in a use application that's going to get denied, knowing that the law itself says that only the board can approve that particular use?
Okay. I just, just trying to, so you can understand my thought process here, when you have two entities that are focused on similar issues, but coming from different perspectives, I want to understand what is the perspective of the zoning administrator that is different from the zoning board because then we don't need a zoning administrator. But that's not the case. So, how do, what does the zoning administrator do and why is that different from the zoning board? And if we cut the zoning administrator out of all these considerations, are we perhaps making a mistake here? I just want to make sure we.
Sure. I guess the cleanest way to think of this is that the BMZA is an appeal board. So, the zoning administrator is making a decision, but there are certain things brought in front of the zoning administrator where his opinion, his review of the code doesn't really matter. The code is crystal clear. He cannot do it or she cannot do it. So, what this is doing is taking those situations and removing that. So, the zoning administrator has zero authority to grant X, just goes straight to the BMZA instead of coming to the first floor and getting that rubber stamp no, processing the paperwork and moving on, which sounds like a very short process. But in the reality, when the agency is dealing with, you know, close to forty thousand permits a year and we only have a handful of staff people that to review all those, it can get bogged down in the system. So, it's, it's cleaning up those situations. Now, there are some situations where the zoning administrator looks at it and says, you know, you need nine feet, you only have eight feet, I deny this permit. And then the person could appeal that decision. You know, so the zoning administrator has authority in many situations to say, you meet it or you don't meet it, and the person with that negative response can then appeal the zoning administrator's decision to the board. So, it's just taking those where he has to say no.
I understand what Councilman Conway is kind of talking about. It seems to me like the processes needs to be looked at and cleaned up more so than the actual structure of.
Responsibility.
The structure responsibility of the zoning administrator.
I, this is.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Yeah, this proposal here is one that I've hoped that we could make for a long time. I think the easiest way for me to explain this to myself is when I look at the, and particularly delineation between the zoning administrator and the BMZA, when I look at the tables at the end of the zoning code to see what is permitted, not permitted, or conditional in any given zoning category as a use, what is permitted or conditional as a use. Right now, if I want a use that the table tells me is permitted, I go to the zoning administrator and I get my permit. Check. Done.
Understood.
But if I want a conditional use, I go to the zoning administrator just so that he can say no. I knew he had no legal authority to say yes, but I was required legally to go to him so he could say no. What this is doing is making it so I don't have to go to him and have him say no, is so that I go to him and he goes, well, I can't say yes, I'm going to give this to the BMZA because they're the only ones who could possibly legally say yes. Right now, he has to legally say no, and I have to technically, procedurally, bureaucratically, I have to appeal it, I have to appeal his no to the Board of Municipal Zone and Zoning Appeals. This cleans that whole process up so that I'm not forced to go get a no for stupid bureaucratic reasons.
You'll work it to get a no from the board. Is that what you're?
I will go, no. I'll go to, I'll go to the board.
I'm going to get a yes from the board.
Yeah.
And I think too, just, you know, I'm pulling up five three oh one under variances, and the board's authority is really clear. So, in application, the variance procedure applies only to changes in bulking yard regulations and changes to signage, parking, and loading requirements. It's not the totality of the zoning code. The zoning administrator, you know, they, you know, he, you know, Jeff Veal, he makes interpretation on use. He does all of these different things. If something, you know, we're not quite sure, we ask, you know, if you need that zoning verification letter, if you need all of these different types of questions, it's not BMZA that is going to make that determination. The authority of BMZA is really pretty finite, and with everything that it says here, with the inclusion of the use table that says conditional to the board. So, it's not, you know, your concern of, oh, are we giving all of this away? It's actually a small amount to process an application.
So, I just want to summarize what I'm understanding. Is that okay? Essentially, what I'm hearing is the zoning administrator pretty much is strictly defined by the law.
Yes.
And the responsibility is given to the zoning administrator by the law. There are certain things that he cannot do. For those that he cannot do or that need some sort of discretion or decision, that is to go to the BMZA. And what we're attempting to do here, it seems, is to eliminate the need to have that check box or the rejection in order to go to BMZA.
Correct.
So, all that being said, at some point, I think it would be good if we, Nina, at least could get the zoning administrator himself to come in and at least just talk about his job and what he does and, right? So, there's a clear understanding directly from the person that is, you know, doing the job.
I agree, and I think my concern, once you change that process, is that you're just going to have a whole bunch of people go to BMZA and they can't handle the volume. I don't know how often we get these.
No.
I don't know. And that's my initial concern, not knowing anything about the numbers or applications that go in, but that's something to think about.
Yeah, we have worked very closely with BMZA, and they are a hundred percent behind this change because they're getting the same level of work with people coming in and saying, where is my appeal? Because it's still downstairs waiting to be transported upstairs. And so, they're behind it because it would just cut it and people could come straight in, and then they're automatically, you know, managing it instead of having to wait for the middleman.
So, that's not what I'm worried about. So that's not what I'm worried about so much as the people who go straight to the BMZA when they don't need to, when the zoning administrator is sufficient for what they need.
Yeah.
See what I mean?
Yeah, and they would just turn them away at that point. They'd send them back downstairs, basically.
Yeah, I think it, it, you know, it's kind of picking what side. I mean, right now, I think the practical reality is people that are coming in to do business, whether with a zoning administrator or with BMZA, they're starting where they start. And if they're in the incorrect place, we send them to the right place. And so it, you know, we're not going to really change that piece of it, because the reality is, most people don't read this book called The Zoning Code at all. And so they don't even know, like, where to start. So we actually, in the Department of Planning, get tons and tons of questions, and we're not BMZA or the zoning administrator. And so we send them, you know, where they need to go. So I don't think that aspect of it is going to change. We did have conversations with both the zoning administrator and the head of BMZA in, in drafting all of this to make sure, you know, that everyone was okay with what we were proposing, and I don't, I think, you know, we can check and make sure, but my communication with Jeff Veal is that he would be here on the 24th.
And we just want a clear, you know, heart-to-heart talk and clarification, because our goal is to help to make things streamlined and better for our constituency.
Yeah, I, I think too, and I can't speak to this, but you alluded to it, is just the operations and the staffing level, and I think it's the same concerns whether you're in the zoning administrator's office or in BMZA. They're both very small, you know, staff members, so you can speak more to the realities of, you know, how to move the pie.
And Jeff has been around a while, so, you know, just out of respect, I think it would be good to have him come in.
Oh, yes, oh.
Any other questions about this, the zoning administrator piece?
Just my last thought on, you know, the concern about going to the BMZA when going to the zoning administrator will do, right? You're not going to skip the zoning administrator and go to the BMZA if you don't have to. It would be like going to the place where you're going to find greater impediment when you need only a simple check, right? Nobody, nobody, nobody's going to come and say, "Can I have a city council ordinance to do a thing that the zoning code says this is a simple procedural thing that you don't need to come to the city council for, an ordinance for?" That's, yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, this is, this, I was going to say this next one was the interesting part, but, so...
It's all interesting.
It's all, it's all interesting, but, so if we're on page 14, and we are at the waiver of time limit, and actually, the only change in C is just capitalizing, well, removing legislative and saying legislative limitation, so just capitalization there. Well, no, actually, just removing it. I don't know why it's a mistake, moving a mistake, I don't know what that is. That's a little weird. But 5310, this is, this is probably the newest and what I thought was going to be the juiciest part. So the language I'll just read it as is because we are actually proposing an amendment to it. So, "The zoning administration, administrator or the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may deny any application for a variance if the subject property has any outstanding notice of violation, code violation, or any other unresolved or unpaid fee, fine, or citation." And then, let's see, we'll stop there. So, this one is, we had some comments on this one as we were preparing for planning commission, and the comment that we received was that it was a due process issue. So prior to, you know, planning commission, and I will say maybe like the day before, or two days before, we actually met with the attorney that had questions about it, Jason Hessler, myself, Katie Byrne, and I think the zoning administrator, we all sat and like, "Let's talk through all of this." So what we did, did is we proposed an amendment, and I know we're not talking about amendments quite yet or discussing them, but I'll read through what we're proposing instead of the language that is in the bill. So in our staff report, in the appendix, in our little table, you'll see the section on discretion to deny BMZA variance applications on 5310. So our proposal is to remove the bill language in lines 22, 22 through 26, which is what I just read aloud, and replace with new language, and I'll read the new language that we're actually proposing. So 5310 code compliance denial is what we would call it. "The zoning administrator or the executive director of the BMZA shall not process any application for a variance if the subject property has any outstanding notice or violation, fine, or fee that is unresolved or unpaid until the violation is abated." Then there's an exception. "The zoning administrator or the executive director of BMZA may process the application for variance if the variance is needed to resolve the outstanding notice of violation or any unresolved or unpaid fee or fine." So that's the language that we are proposing, and what that does is clarify that it's not the actual BMZA being denied, it's not the actual variance being denied, is that the application itself is not being processed until you cure the violation. If it's something other than, if you're seeking something other, other than, you know, what that violation is, we can process the application if your BMZA request is going to help cure that violation. So that's the proposal that we have, and I know this is something that Katie Byrne feels really strongly about, and I don't know if you wanted to speak to some of the issues, I'm not, you know, sure, but that's where we landed, and so I'll turn it over to you guys if there are any questions or...
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. This is an elegant amendment. I just want to comment, and I like it.
That's scary.
No, it is. It's, it's nice. It's, it's turning from denial of due process to regulating government as we are entitled to do. Hillary, or, does this include liens, fines, fees, violation, notice of violations?
I think that you could clarify that it wouldn't, but it, I would think on its face, it solves that problem itself in the sense that you probably can't get out of most liens with a variance or this type of application. So it's basically saying, if you need this application in order to cure the problem, we're processing it. But if you don't, you'd better make sure that you give yourself enough time to fix your code violation before you come here, because we're not going to just reward bad property owners.
Yeah.
If that's making sense. So it would only apply to those liens for which, if they exist, you would need such an approval to fix your problem. And I can't think of very many of those.
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't be a tax lien, it wouldn't be a water bill, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we have, we lean...
I think Aaron wants to add to that.
I'll just add that the, that it probably does apply to liens, but the, to Hillary's point, there's not going to be many circumstances where it's, this isn't applicable, so...
Yeah, I mean, under the charter, every single thing you owe the government is a lien on your property. So it will apply to some of them, but it just depends on what they are, and it's only going to apply to the ones where you need this to fix your lien problem. And I can't think of many of those other than, you have racked up so many code enforcement violations, and you owe us so much money, and it's been enough time that, you know, we're in that, they all are, by operation of law, a lien on your property. So it's only going to apply to those where you need this to fix your problem, if that makes sense.
Jason?
I think that, I think I understand, Councilman, where you're coming from, in that liens aren't mentioned here when it says, "Any outstanding notice of violation, code violation, or other unresolved or unpaid fee, fine, or citation." And I think you're suggesting to add in there, fee, fine, citation, or lien, so that if somebody has a debt to the city, they got to resolve that before the decision is made on this.
I would think that seems reasonable. Is that not covered?
It does, except for it's, like, it's kind of a, I don't know that it's needed, because what liens would there be that you...
Liens that are, liens that are for, if we raise your property, if you're...
I think if they had an outstanding tax bill, purely for taxes.
Right, so if you add in all liens, that's everything you owe, it may look like it's expanding it. But remember, this is in the exception to the non-processing. It only applies if the thing you owe...
No, I'm not talking about just the exception, I'm talking about the, in general, for the, in general here. Not for the exception. In general, we shouldn't be permitting...
Well, but then, then, you know, you have, you have to figure out whether you want every single charge that the government, everything that you owe the government is a lien. It just is, under, under charter. So I think the intent was to make it only those that are addressing code problems, you know? Not, for example, you got a parking ticket yesterday, you plan to pay it tomorrow, but you can't go to the zoning board now and ask for your variance, because you have a parking ticket. It is a lien the moment you get it. So I think the intent was the fines, fees, and maybe this isn't well-worded, obviously, I thought the intent was to be fines, fees, things that are related to your property for which we want you to cure.
Yeah.
Not like, because all of us owe a tax bill, basically, you know, the instant the taxes are imposed. Like, I don't think you mean that you have to pay all your taxes far in advance just to be able to get this.
It's not a...
Right? Because that would be a lien.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a fine or a fee, I'm saying, it's not exactly a fine or a fee if the city is sending me a bill for raising my property. That's not a fine or a fee.
Right, it's not a fine or a fee, it's by operation of law. Same with a, a water bill, actually.
Right, I need, I need...
You're just paying for a commodity.
I need for you to pay the bill for the raising of the property before we get, get you the use.
So, so does this only address fines generated by code violations?
Upon the reading, I can say by the drafting, when we were drafting this, we were in an enforcement mind and thinking you had outstanding fees for a permit. There's occasions where people obtain a permit, and then their check doesn't clear, the permit's revoked, and they owe the agency the money for the processing of that permit, or license or registration that we would process. And then as far as fines, it would be in relation to citations or surcharges associated with violations of the building, fire, zoning codes, and the permitting process. So that's, that was in our minds when we drafted it. We were not thinking tax bills, water bills, parking tickets, any of those things.
Right. And I should clarify, parking ticket is a terrible example, because it actually says it's, it's the fine or fee on the subject property, not the person. The parking ticket would go to me and my car. So it's got to be something that is a fine or a fee on your property. So if you add the word lien, it now covers your water bill and your tax bill that may not be due yet. So do you want people to have to pay their entire tax bill, because it is a lien on their property, well in advance, only to be able to go through this? And I would think the answer was no. You want them to be paying fines, fees, violation payments. You don't want them to be paying off every lien on their property in order to get there. Yeah.
I'll have a follow-up on this. Thank you.
All right, you can continue. We want to, just so the committee will know, we want to wrap up today by four. Go ahead.
Okay, so we are moving to page 15 of the bill, 5401, conditional uses and signs. So this, this is where, you know, I mentioned early on in the beginning that we are adding signage that's conditional use to the board, or not use, have to make sure I stop saying it that, conditional to the board. So this is where we're adding all of that in, starting with 5401. So signs, in certain districts, some sign types are allowed by conditional approval. The conditional approval in this situation is interpreted as allowing the sign type within a lot to be more intense than would otherwise be allowed in that district because of possible broader impact to the surrounding area. So this particular piece is just setting up the purpose of what a conditional sign is, and then I'll walk through the rest of it, because that's what's actually given the authority that will mirror conditional uses. So the first section that we are cleaning up is the referral section, section applicable to conditional board approvals. So you'll see in line 11 where you say conditional uses, and where are you saying "and signs." So you'll see that pretty much everywhere. So we're also removing the referral to BMZA for action, once the zoning administrator determines that an application for a conditional use approval by BMZA is complete, must forward it. So that's kind of a companion to the last piece. That's a cleanup, because they'll apply directly to BMZA. So that part is not needed. And then the next piece of it is saying, we're removing zoning administrator and saying the executive director of BMZA must also refer. So this is where, again, we're changing that authority, so this is the continuation of that ripple effect that we talked about previously, where we're going from some zoning administrator duties to the executive director of BMZA. So that follows suit in lines 24 and 25 as well. So review standards, this is about conditional use review standards. So the BMZA or the city council, as the case may be, must evaluate the request for a conditional use and sign. So we're adding in "and sign." And flipping, flipping over to page 16. So in the previous sections that we discussed, some of the, the notice times changed from 60 to 90 days, so this is the continuation of that with public hearing required. So, and we're adding in, so this is where a few things are happening. So we're adding in "and conditional sign." So in line four, where it says the BMZA must consider a conditional use and conditional sign, and then we move down to line nine, where previously we talked about 60 days going to 90 days, so this is, you know, that you see that next pairing happening, happening there. Again, the waiver of time limit from 60 to 90 days that changes in line 19, so that's that part of the amendment. And again, you see that in line 27, where the decision of the board, we're adding in, "The board may extend this period for up to an additional 60 days for good cause on a majority vote at the board of publicly scheduled meeting." So it's just saying that it can render its decision up to 60 days instead of the 30, so it's really given that, that same latitude that we needed before. So page 17, in 5405, we're adding in on line six, "and sign." So wherever you see conditional use, we have to add in the "or" sign or "and" sign, whichever is appropriate. And then approval standards is the same thing in line 13. You see "or" sign being added. Same thing in line 16, "or" sign is being added. And I think you see it again in lines 30 and 31, we're adding in "or" sign. And page 18, let's see, I think that's just the continuation of that section. So 5407...
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conway?
I just want to, I know we moved through it really quickly, and just kind of want to put the question out there for the change to 60 to 90 days, was there anything to suggest that 60 days was not enough time to do the work, or, just a little bit of logic there, that's all.
So I, this is where I would have to kind of refer to Jason Hessler on that and maybe conversations with Katie Byrne.
It's exactly that, just providing additional time to, to process the requests and schedule everything that needs to be scheduled with the board and those kinds of things.
Did we find that we were often missing that deadline?
That I would have to check with the BMZA or...
Yeah, that'd be helpful to know. I mean, certainly, I have no problem extending that, that... I mean, certainly, I have no problem extending that time, but I don't want to do so just because we can do it. We want to make sure that people get their applications responded to in an expeditious manner.
Sure.
That's all. Thank you. You can keep going.
I have a similar question.
And Councilman Dorsey has a similar question.
What happens if we miss the deadline? Can somebody just like sue us, go to court and say, we've been denied our process and...
In this instance, yeah, because it could be affecting their property rights. You know, it's not the same as like if your city council rule requires you to like, you know, not pass a bill for a couple of meetings, there, there may not be a substantive due process right in effect. In this case, yes, they certainly could. Most of them don't do it for just this violation. They'll add it to their lawsuit when they complain about the overall response. So, it's just one of those things that we could, you know, the actual decision could be airtight and all Ts crossed, all Is dotted, and then kicked out because we didn't follow our own internal process. It's generally a doctrine that applies more to state and federal law than it does to municipal law. It's like an administrative law-type doctrine. But it, the same underlying principle can apply to us if it raises to the level of a due process violation. So, yes, possible. It's not, it's not automatically going to be seen by a court as a due process violation because the delay may not have actually substantively affected the person, you know, to that level. But it could happen.
And I'll just add, Councilman Dorsey, the remedy is for that sort of a violation is normally just the, if it comes to that, a court may say, hurry up and give them the decision. There's no generally monetary penalty to the city.
And the court's not likely to make the decision...
You have to grant them their request. No, it's usually...
Application. They're just basically going to order the board to hear it.
Yeah. I mean, they can try to order the board. I mean, that's a tough one, only because that's sort of a non-enforceable thing when you think about separation of powers. But what they could do is say, "The city's failure to meet its deadline is yet more further evidence that, you know, the whole consideration of this particular issue was flawed," you know, or whatever. But, but they're probably, I mean, I haven't seen, and Aaron might have seen, an actual case where all they're suing on is the 60 or 90-day deadline. I think that would be kind of a weak case and not worth it. They're usually including their substantive problem with this decision. I mean, if you get your decision, you know, five days late, but you love the decision, you're probably not complaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're, you're good, Councilman?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on to Mark.
Okay. Page 18, 5407, continuing with adding in sign. So, exercise within your rear yard. So, we're on line 15. It speaks to, that speaks to conditional use and they were saying, "and a conditional sign. Approval lapses void within one year." So, we're again mirroring. And then, in line 22, lines 22 and 23, we're adding in the language for signage. So, a building permit under this code and any other applicable code, codes has been obtained for the sign. So, it's just making sure everything is legal for that approval. And then, we're on to page 19. And so, this is the adding in. So, right now, we have discontinued conditional use. So, we're adding in a B, which is discontinued conditional sign. If a conditional sign is removed in its entirety from the building or structure for which it was approved for a continuous period of one year or more, the conditional approval automatically lapses and is void. A new application is required before the conditional approval may be reestablished. It's much like a, you know, conditional use. I mean, someone goes, something goes vacant and the sign goes down. You lose all authority related to that. So, that is similar. Same thing if we move down to page, to line 19, we're adding in "or" sign. Lines 25, 26, and 28, again, we're adding in "or" sign. So, it's the mirror there. And page 20, again, so this is back to our discretion to deny. "The Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may deny any application for a conditional use or sign if the subject property has any outstanding notice or violation." In this one, we do have a companion bill as in 5310. So, where we have the discretion to deny for the conditional use, we have a proposal from planning commission to actually modify that language that would be similar to what we read before, except it would say conditional sign instead of conditional use. So, the authority would not be BMZA denied it, but it would be the executive director denying the application itself. And so, that's on Title V. That's all we have.
Okay. And I would be remiss if I didn't, I should have mentioned this really before Hillary spoke. But I did, I did want to mention that Victor Turvila represented the Law Department at our last meeting, and he has retired and will be missed. And Hillary has represented us today with the Law Department at this work session and hoping you're going to continue with us.
You are stuck with me.
All right. Okay. Right. So, let me see. So, it looks like we're going to continue to go into recess. And our next scheduled work session is the 24th. And we'll see you all again. Thank you all for this wonderful, needed discussion as we move forward.
Thank you.